Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of Board of Education, sorry, Board of Education of the Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Education Service Unit Number 19 will be held Thursday, February 8, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the Teaching and Learning Center at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. Please visit our website, www OPS.org. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is published in the Teaching and Learning Center on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice President Smith, could you please lead us in the vision and mission?
Yes, the vision, every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission, to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Thank you. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Crackkey? Smith?
Here.
Tealyn? Cassidy?
Erdnberger?
Here.
Foal?
Here.
Head?
Present.
Holman?
Present.
Juarez?
Here.
Eight present.
All right, and do we have a motion to excuse Ms. Cassidy? And she did inform me she wouldn't be able to attend.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith. We have a second. Second by Ms. Foal. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Foal?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackkey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have school spotlight with Mr.
Tonight's OPS Proud Spotlight recognizes South High student Diego Martinez Gutierrez, who recently won the Congressional App Challenge for Nebraska. I'm happy to introduce South High Principal Jody Peschek to begin. Principal Peschek.
I'm going to keep it very brief. I am so incredibly proud to be here to honor this young man tonight. He is a perfect representation of a South High student, one of our best performers in multiple areas, and has an eclectic set of skills that's going to really serve him well in the future. Mr. Grudemeyer is going to tell you the rest of the story.
Hello, everyone. I am so excited to be able to be here and introduce Diego Martinez Gutierrez. As you are aware, he was the winner of the Congressional App Challenge for this year. His app, MindLink, aims to help students de-stigmatize mental health and provides resources for students, including links to helps from professional organizations. I know he's going to answer some questions for you, but I'm going to do what he hates and I'm going to brag on him for a little bit because he's such a great example of South High school. Diego is not only involved in coding in his free time, but he's also highly involved in South High. Not only is he a shining star in a performing arts department in four different ensembles, four out of eight classes a day are ensembles, he's also involved in the Packer Partner Program, which is mentoring freshman advisements twice a week, among many other responsibilities, and a founder of our mediachi club. He's been both in our South musicals and our summer musicals and has even won awards and recognition at district music contests and from the Omaha Performing Arts for his participation. He's a great example that the arts is not just the arts. The arts creates multiple venues for students to be successful, including encouraging students to not only invent the arts, but also dabble in coding and other things as well. He's a brilliant young man, and I could not have a better person to be recognized this evening, so please welcome Diego.
Hello. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Yeah, absolutely, colleagues. Ms. Crackkey?
Are you going to be in the summer musical? And is it announced?
I mean, for my part, it's a yes.
Yeah. If you haven't been to South High Summer Musical, you really need to go. It will shock you to pieces. It's as good as a playhouse or better. It's just great. So I'll look forward to seeing you, and I'll look forward to seeing what you're doing next. I want to say that they do have a great show choir at South High, and I'm asking him today. So who else do you recommend that we ought to be talking to to have a show choir like you do? So it's really great. Thank you for doing all that work, and thank you for being here. And my goodness, smart in math, you've got it made. That's great.
Thank you.
Any other questions, colleagues? Ms. Juarez?
Thank you, President Head. So I'd like to know, what thoughts are you giving to what you might want to do in college? Are you having trouble with that, with all your talents that you have?
Yeah, honestly, I've really been thinking about music education, and I've also been thinking about aviation since it runs in my family. I have a lot of uncles that are pilots, so it would be great to pursue that. And I've also thought about STEM, but for now, it's just those two.
Ms. Foal?
Thank you for coming tonight. I have two questions. First, what grade are you in?
I'm currently a senior.
A senior? Great. And then I'm also wondering, did you name your app? Like, did your app have a name?
Yes.
And what was it?
I did. MindLink.
MindLink, okay. Sorry. It's been a long day for me, so if I missed it, I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right, I have a million and a half questions for you, so I'll try to cut down to maybe the most important ones. So how did you come up with the idea for your app? And how did you build it?
I came up with the idea mostly because I've seen so many people in my community struggle, and I've seen so many people have problems with mental health, and I thought, what a better way to help out people in my community than by STEM.
Great. So back in another life, I ran education outreach for one of our former congressmen when the Congressional App Challenge was actually started, I think it was 2013, maybe? And so it's awesome to see that the program's still going, that there's a lot of interest, but also it's great to have an OPS student win it. So are you interested in staying in coding, programming, STEM then, after you graduate? What's the plan?
Yes, totally. I mean, during my high school, my high school career, I guess, my schedule has been really, really full, and I have not been able to enter into coding or computer science class. But, I mean, after high school, if I do have the chance, I will totally look forward to it.
Perfect. Well, and I know there are a million high-paying, very lucrative positions in the coding field. Again, outside of here, I run a company that hires a lot of programmers, and we cannot hire anyone. So keep at it, because that is an amazing skill to have. So thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
So, and if you could, come around and give everybody a handshake. Mr. Ray has no comments tonight, so Board members, starting at the right. Ms. Crackkey? Nope. All right, Ms. Juarez?
Thank you, President Head. So it's getting exciting for me to be at this process of where we're going to be selecting our future superintendent. And I, of course, not been through this process in my little time that I've been on the board, but I'm looking forward to the challenge and looking forward to see who our future candidates are in making an important decision on behalf of the district. I definitely hope that we find a leader who's not afraid to implement changes that I think our school system needs. I think that it's really important that we have a leader who is willing to make those changes. That's what's most important to me. And of course, there are all those other positive aspects that we want in a leader, but I'm definitely going to look for someone who's not afraid to make changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Erdnberger?
Just quickly, and with our new equipment, I'm eating a purple cookie here, so let me know if my lips are purple, okay? So far, so good. I just wanted to draw your attention to item, I believe it's I-17 on the consent agenda. Just another piece of evidence of what a remarkable difference our Academy and Pathways Program is making in OPS and all the things that we're accomplishing. Item 117, and if you look onto the larger agenda, it's about the fact that this year saw the beginning of our cohort of students who will be graduating from North High School, I mean Northwest, sorry, slip of the tongue, Northwest High School, not only with their high school diploma, but with an associate's degree as well, from Metropolitan Community College through a partnership between OPS and Metro. It's my understanding that there are currently 49 students in that first class coming through, which was a little bit larger than we even expected, is my understanding. So I just think it's exciting that we're offering so many different opportunities, not the least of which is a community college associate's degree at the same time you graduate from high school. So congratulations to everybody that's been working so hard to make that dream come true. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Foal?
Thank you. I just wanted to provide an update. So this Wednesday, the 24th, at 6:00 or 6:30 PM, there will be an educational community forum hosted by Moore, which is a nonprofit, and also by the Urban League of Nebraska. And I will be there answering questions, and I would really love if you could make it. I saw the questions ahead of time, and they're really grilling me, so it should be pretty interesting. But that's about it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments tonight, colleagues? All right, seeing none. The next item on the agenda is public comment. We have eight speakers who have submitted requests to be heard for us tonight, and the Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute remaining, when you have 30 seconds remaining. See, we don't need that part. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Dr. McFarland know, and one will be provided for you. We understand people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about. We ask that you respect the opinions of others and all who speak, and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during the presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member, and instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland. She will assist us into looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Dr. McFarland, and she will make sure each Board member gets a copy. As a reminder, Nebraska Revised Statute 841412 requires that any member of the public desiring to address the Board identify yourself, including a name, address, and any organization you may represent, unless that requirement is waived for security reasons. And we do have a couple of individuals who have requested waivers tonight. I'll go through the first group. I'll just treat it as a block since they're all students. We have Catherine Vela, and I apologize if I mispronounced the name. It looks like Ballard Jackson? Jack Shaw, I apologize. Charles Yale, Jane McGill, and Fiona Bryant. So do we have a motion to approve the waiver for those?
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Smith. Second by, was that Ms. Foal? Give it to Dr. Holman, it looks like. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Foal?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackkey?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And the other individual requesting a waiver tonight is Victoria Mijas. Do we have a motion to grant the waiver?
So.
So, motion by Ms. Erdnberger, second by Mr. Tealyn. Do we have any discussion?
Excuse me. Is it possible for me to see it?
Yeah, yeah, one second. I'll pass it down. Let's take a couple-second recess here. All right, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackkey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Foal?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. So again, we ask that all other individuals who aren't covered by one of the previous motions, please state and spell your first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you're here representing any particular organization before you begin your comment. In addition, please remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let Dr. McFarland know, and she will get them from you. It is 6:18 PM, and our first speaker is Kathy Poling.
Kathy Poling, K-A-T-H-Y-P-O-E-H-L-I-N-G, 8135 South 50th Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68157. And I'm speaking as the President of the Omaha Education Association. Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, Interim Superintendent Mr. Ray, and members of the Board. I first want to talk about how encouraged I have been with the work that the district has been doing with OEA. I want to thank you for approving the 10% increase for our special education teachers. We know there's a shortage. We know they're working hard. Thank you for bringing that to us to reward them for what they've done. I also thank you for bringing forward the MOU for the coaches, also, for the wrestling I did want to talk a little bit about retention. I brought a retention plan to the district. We are working on that. We've been talking about that. I just want to remind you that it's not just early-career educators who we need to retain. We know that's been difficult to retain teachers after three to four years, but we also need to really start looking at our veteran teachers. Our veteran teachers have the experience that we need in our district to pass on to the newer teachers. Our veteran teachers are connected in their communities and in their schools. We need to remember them. The state legislature has a lot of bills to help retain newer teachers, but I ask you as a district to keep that in the forefront of your mind. I was made aware that the Board has put together a committee for curriculum. I would ask that the Board also look at two other situations in which I hope they have a high interest in, and that is staffing. And the other one is what's happening in our classrooms. So I'm talking about behavior. I'm talking about teachers being hurt in their classrooms. We need to bring this to light and start talking about it. I get emails all the time from teachers who have been scratched and bit and kicked and spit on and punched, and they're looking for help. And we can't retain teachers if they're continuing to be hurt in their classrooms. So I'm asking you to put together a committee to help support our educators so that they can stay in a healthy district who takes care of their staff and their students and makes the best learning environment for our students. I would not be representing my members if I didn't bring up the calendar for next year because I've gotten so many calls about the calendar for next year. Two issues that I hear all the time, the day back for kindergartners to come the day before the rest of the kids in elementary, has been a huge issue of concern. The second one, of course, is Thanksgiving Week, and so I'm asking you again to look at your calendar. at your calendar, see if there's any way that we can work that week into the calendar. My members have been asking for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Victoria Mejias. I apologize. And just a reminder, you were covered by a waiver, so you don't need to provide your address.
Thank you. My name is Victoria Mejias. That's V-I-C-T-O-R-I-A-M-E-J-I-A-S. My two teenagers have been attending an OPS high school now, just fairly recently, after transferring from a fancy private school and before that coming from Elkhorn Public Schools, which oftentimes is cited as one of the highest-ranking districts in the state. But after both experiences, I can confidently say that OPS has been a real blessing in our lives and the lives of my family. The district is doing many things right, including correcting a lot of the inequities and injustices that my two bi-racial children experienced throughout their entire academic careers, including my son who has special needs. The Special Education Department at OPS has been wonderful. More often than not, I know that as parents, we can fixate on what's going wrong and make it a habit of complaining, but I do want to give credit where credit is due. Sadly, my time is limited, so I do want to call the board's attention to an issue that is causing a serious issue for not just me, but many other families throughout the OPS district. This is not a complaint at all. This is really a genuine plea for your help as leaders of the OPS district. The recording and reporting system for attendance and tardiness at the district is seriously flawed, faulty, and lacking. Since starting at the district, my family and I have received notices that our children have been marked absent or tardy 92% of the time. And I can assure you, my children have not missed school 92% of the time. We get notices on the Infinite Campus app on our cell phones, as well as daily phone calls, and you guys call every phone you have in the system with an automated phone call every single day. I have taken these concerns to the attendance secretary, to the counselors, and to the administrators of the high school, who try to explain that your system somehow records minutes over days. But even if that was the case, my children have not missed 92% of the time at their school, and the system is still very faulty. Oftentimes, I'm trying to locate my children because I'll receive a notification saying they're missing, and they text me selfies with their friends in class, like, Mom, I don't know why you're getting that. We're in class. While this might just seem like some sort of daily nuisance, I really want to call your attention to how this is affecting the lives of OPS families and our livelihoods. In my case, I am facing an uphill custody battle with my abusive ex-husband. We've been in one for over, like, the past year. He has now filed two contempt motions with Douglas County District Court against me. Part of his allegations is alleging that I am not getting my kids to school, which is not correct. And so in this case, I might be personally facing jail time, fines, sanctions, paying his legal fees because of the district's mistake. And I have a sophomore and junior. They're not little. I've been taking them to school for years, and I have never faced this issue since before coming to OPS. So while their school's not taking this matter seriously, I pray that you do. I also have a friend who's a dental assistant who has now been written up twice by her employer because she'd made two personal phone calls on the clock to try to locate her high schooler, who also was actually in class at the time. It's just a matter of however attendance and tardiness has been tracking. So in this case, she's actually facing the possibility of losing her job, which just seems completely unnecessary. I know that you guys deal with a lot of controversial issues, but I don't know anyone who would have an issue with accurate reporting and recording. So as leaders, I appeal to you. The teachers know it's an issue. The students know it's an issue. Your administrators know it's an issue. When we take this up with the administrators, they just kind of shrug it off and say, yeah, we know it's a broken system, but it's what we've got. So I pray that you thoroughly investigate this issue so we can get an accurate reporting, even if that means some sort of new system.
One minute.
Putting a new system in place because right now, we are honestly putting families in jeopardy of losing their jobs, their livelihoods, having their children ripped apart from their homes, simply because it's constantly looked at as a nuisance instead of a serious issue. I even recently received a letter from the state of Nebraska Department of Education for the first time in my life alleging that my children are grossly tardy and not attending school, which is just not the case.
30 seconds.
So please also protect yourself in this matter. As in speaking to my attorneys, I've been told that if the district continues to overlook it, you can be viewed as negligent and held liable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker tonight is Kirsten Gilliland.
Address is 9952 South 35th Plaza, Bellevue 68123. So again, I'm Kirsten Gilliland. Hi, thanks for letting me speak today. I am a certified journalism educator through the Journalism Education Association. I am also the journalism advisor at Bryan High School, and I am in my second year serving on the executive board for the Nebraska High School Press Association, of which I am secretary. I know today you received an email from Michelle Hassler, the Nebraska High School Press Association Executive Director. I would just like to take a couple minutes to reiterate some points she made and repeat that to those in the audience who may be not aware of what might be happening soon in our legislature and also here soon through the Omaha Public Schools Board. And then I also forgot to mention, I'm a member of the Journalism Education Association Scholastic Press Rights Committee. So, "Dear OPS School Board," and this is an abbreviated version of the email. "The Nebraska High School Press Association Executive Board was informed Sunday evening that the Omaha Public School Board of Education is being asked today to officially oppose L-B 1071, which ensures First Amendment rights of journalism students and their teachers, and strengthens the teaching of journalism education. I am writing this email on behalf of the Nebraska High School Press Association Executive Board to urge OPS Education Board members to vote against the Legislative Committee's recommendation to officially oppose L-B 1071. The Nebraska High School Press Association, whose membership includes more than 50 Nebraska journalism advisors and teachers, is concerned about the censorship and prior restraint cases occurring in Omaha and other Nebraska schools. Censorship and prior restraint demoralize and discourage teachers and students and has a chilling effect, even on those teachers and students who aren't directly affected. Several award-winning and dedicated teachers in Omaha and elsewhere in the state have left the profession recently because of censorship and prior restraint. The censorship and prior restraint that is occurring in Nebraska schools also weakens the teaching of journalism. This affects not only aspiring journalists, but any student interested in learning about civics and the U.S. Constitution. OPS in the state are fortunate to have knowledgeable and dedicated teachers who teach students to be responsible and follow the ethical guidelines in the journalism profession. They teach the Society of Professional Journalists Code of Ethics, which requires that journalists seek truth and report it independently and in service of the public. The code requires journalists to balance the public's need for information against potential harm. According to the code, journalists are to be accountable and transparent, and any mistakes are to be corrected promptly and acknowledged. Censorship and prior restraint are in direct conflict with this code and accepted best practices for teaching journalism. Censorship and prior restraint prevent students from practicing journalism skills the way they are taught. Most cases of censorship involve administrators who dictate what student journalists can and cannot cover. They often restrict publication of controversial stories or stories that might reflect badly on the school. That is contrary to the journalism mission of seeking truth and reporting it in a responsible and ethical manner. Our communities desperately need well-trained and enthusiastic journalists. And while journalism teachers are preparing aspiring journalists, they also are helping all students become engaged and news literate citizens. Journalism education is a win-win for democracy, and that's why we believe OPS should be doing all it can to strengthen journalism education. L-B 1071 does just that. Similar bills have been passed by our neighbors in 17 states, including specifically neighbors in Iowa, Kansas, and Colorado. We urge the OPS Board to consult the talented and dedicated journalism teachers in OPS before taking any vote. The NHSPA Board is also more than happy to discuss this matter with you in further details at your convenience. Sincerely, Michelle Hassler, NHSPA Executive Director."
Thank you. Next speaker tonight is Catherine Vela. And just a reminder, all of the next four speakers are covered by the waiver for not providing your address.
My name is Catherine. K-A-T-H-Y. I'm a senior at South High School, student journalist, tutor. I'm here today to ask you to support L-B 1071, a bill that will protect the rights to freedom of speech and the freedom of the press for student journalists in Nebraska. This issue is important to me because, as the editor of the tutor, I see stories every day from bright, enthusiastic student journalists, and I feel strongly that it is vital to protect the rights and freedoms of all student journalists. This bill ensures that we, as student journalists, can freely write stories important to our community without fear of arbitrary censorship. The exceptions stated in this bill make sure that administrators have the oversight over student publications necessary to keep us safe in learning. I urge you to protect the rights of student journalists and support media advisors by supporting L-B 1071. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Valor Jackshaw.
My name is Valor Jackshaw. That's V-A-L-U-R-J-A-K-S-H-A. I am the senior class president of Central High. I firmly believe that I speak for the interests of Central when I say that the OPS Board should wholeheartedly support Legislative Bill 1071, as it enshrines our ideals surrounding free speech and freedom of the press, even within the doors of our high schools. The success of similar legislation in other states and the lack of any legitimate threat it poses to a school district such as our own tells the teachers and staff of Central High that the only reason our school board would have to oppose this bill would be fear. Fear of what the flourishing young minds of our school have to say, be that about themselves, their community, or their school. I encourage the board members to consider the ideals they hold dearest and the values they wish to impart upon the students they represent. A number of Central High registers, our school paper, hang along the walls of my room at home. I hung them there because of the impact they had on me, or the impact they had within my school. These pieces of journalism represent the very heart of trust and integrity upon which meaningful education is built, and we have a vested interest in supporting L-B 1071 as it protects that foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Charles Yale.
I do have copies of my speech that can be handed out, but that can be after the speech. Thank you. Mr. Head, Mr. Smith, and the Board of Education, my name is Charlie Yale, spelled C-H-A-R-L-I-E-Y-A-L-E. I'm a current senior at Omaha Central High School and the co-editor-in-chief of the Omaha Central Register, and I'm here today to urge you to support L-B 1071 introduced by Senator Duncan. To best understand my testimony, I think it's important that we understand what the status quo position continues to enable here in Nebraska schools. On March 31st, 2022, the principal of Grand Island Northwest High School walked into the journalism classroom with a list of rules from the administration. Three transgender students were forced to use the names given for their bylines because the use of their chosen names was, quote, "controversial," end quote. In response, the students published their final issue of the year in June dedicating three stories to LGBT pride. After the issue was published, the school administration retaliated. The paper was shuttered, leaving their high school students without any journalism. Unfortunately, what happened in Grand Island cannot be dismissed as an outlier. The Student Press Law Center has chronicled dozens of similar issues over the past few years. The bill that you are deciding on today has the chance to make this kind of censorship a thing of the past in Nebraska. In 1988, the Supreme Court ruling in Hazelwood v. Colmeyer said that the school administrators have the right to censor media when censorship is, quote, "reasonably related to legitimate pedagogical concerns," end quote. This ruling overturned the recognized precedent established in Tinker v. Des Moines, but only for student journalists. The Tinker standard establishes that the First Amendment applies to public schools and that school officials could not censor speech unless it disrupted the educational process. The Hazelwood standards has essentially given school administrations carte blanche to censor student papers. Often, like we saw at the Grand Island Northwest, stories that are censored address issues like LGBTQ+ students or issues related to race, are critical of the school or administration, or expose scandals. As a queer teen Nebraskan, it's important to me that I'm able to report on issues affecting me and my community, and it's important to other queer Nebraskans across the rest of the state that this bill passes for that reason, among others. When you support the passage of this bill, you help create concrete positive outcomes for student journalists in numerous ways. First, you establish that the work expressed by a student newspaper is separate from the views of the school. In the status quo, that line is blurred. This legislation serves to help not only student journalists, but the schools they operate within by protecting the school and district from liability. In turn, this helps create an environment where students feel free to report and engage with complex topics, sharpening their journalistic prowess and preparing them for the world. Moreover, this bill actually protects the district from lawsuits. To this date, there has never been a libel suit against any high school journalism program. But through Hazelwood's vague definitions of, quote, "legitimate pedagogical concerns," end quote, costly and embarrassing litigations between students and schools often ensue. A clear, direct policy about when student media may be restrained ensures that schools and journalists are protected. Secondly, it overturns the policy of prior review. Student press freedom is good education policy. Prior review is criticized by every journalism education group in the United States as the wrong way to teach student journalists. Yet, prior review still continues here in Nebraska. When a policy is criticized by all national education associations surrounding a certain subject, it is removed from the curriculum, not further entrenched. Students cannot learn algebra without learning quadratic functions, nor biology without learning cell function. This policy allows us to practice good journalism with the guidance of an advisor who will support us in our pursuit of news gathering. The bill in front of us does not open school up to lawsuits. It does not allow students to publish without proper feedback, and it does not step on the toes of any other district policy. What it does do is provide journalists with the free speech rights that the rest of high school students have, and ensure student journalists can address the issues which are critically important to marginalized students and all students who wish to attend schools in which justice is the default operational motivation instead of censorship. I urge you to support this bill, and I open myself to any questions from the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. And if you could, please provide Dr. McFarland with your speech. We'll make sure everybody gets a copy of it.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jane McGill.
And I'm sorry to make you walk over here again, Dr. McFarland, but when I'm finished with my speech, I have a written statement from my journalism advisor. We heard from Ms. Gillibrand, and this one's from Brody Hellingcamp, my advisor at Central, which he requested be passed out to each of the board members. So if you could do that once I'm finished, I would greatly appreciate that. President Head, Superintendent Ray, and members of the board, my name is Jane McGill, and I'm a senior at Central High School and a student journalist at the register, Central's historic student newspaper. Some of you may recognize me. I was regular at school board meetings last year as I was the school board columnist for the paper, helping to bring my school community information about the decisions made at these meetings. I'm here today not only as a journalist, but also as a free speech advocate, to ask you to support L-B 1071, a bill which would protect the right to freedom of speech and freedom of the press for student journalists in Nebraska. The issue is deeply personal to me because I am a beneficiary of the outstanding journalism education provided by Omaha Public Schools. Before taking journalism my freshman year, I had no idea what I wanted to do after high school. Today, I stand before you as the winner of the National Classic Journalist Impact Award, the Journal of Education Association's Superior Award for Press Law and Ethics, and the 2023 Nebraska State Champion in Newspaper News Writing. Through my involvement with Central Student Newspaper, I have discovered an all-consuming passion that has led me to choose to major in journalism in college with the hope of working professionally in local journalism. While many may write off student journalism as frivolous, the opposite- While many may write off student journalism as frivolous, the opposite is the case. Student journalists in Nebraska have reported on issues affecting their communities, including the effects of COVID-19, discrimination, poverty, educational inequity, and racism. At the same time, student journalists have brought well-deserved attention to the achievements of their fellow students and the positive things happening at their schools. I have succeeded in high school journalism because of the support of my advisor, Brody Hildenkamp, my peers, and because I'm fortunate to attend a school where administrative administration does not arbitrarily censor student journalists. But unfortunately, I know that not every student in Nebraska is so fortunate. In 2022, Northwest High School in Grand Island shut out its entire journalism program after students wrote opinion pieces voicing their support for LGBTQ+ rights. I want every student journalist in Nebraska to have the exact same opportunities to tell stories that are important to their school community that I have had in OPS, at a time in which social media has enabled misinformation about our schools to run rampant. Student journalism has emerged as a vital and reliable source of information for students, teachers, and parents. The exceptions in this bill ensure that school administrators still have the oversight over student publications they need to ensure that journalism is being produced responsibly by students in accordance with accepted standards of journalistic ethics. It also does not create any new legal liability for Omaha Public Schools. As Charlie noted, to date, no school district that does not interfere with its student papers has ever been legally liable, held legally liable for the content of their student publications. I urge you to protect the rights of OPS's student journalists and student media advisors by disregarding the recommendation of the Legislative Committee and supporting LB 1071. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Fiona Bryant.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Fiona Bryant, F-I-O-N-A-B-R-Y-A-N-T, and I'm a junior at Central where I write for the Register, which is our newspaper. I'm also the Register's Opinion Section Editor, meaning I lead a section that benefits immensely from student journalists' right to free speech and would benefit greatly from LB 1071. OPS has great journalism programs. I can attest to Central's especially. The Register is the oldest newspaper west of the Mississippi and has earned numerous national awards throughout the years. Yet Nebraska's high schools have faced censorship or entire dismantlings of their journalism departments in recent years because Nebraska does not yet have a bill like LB 1071. Consequently, Central's acclaimed newspaper, OPS's acclaimed newspaper, Omaha's acclaimed newspaper, lacks protection. As student journalists, we are publishing informative, accurate, ethically sound articles to serve our student body. With the risk of our paper being shut down or otherwise censored, the students of Central would lose an essential resource for information and an integral part of our school's history. Even if just one article were censored, students would be lacking important knowledge. And as a section editor, it is my job to help fellow student journalists write accurately and ethically. The Register is a high-quality newspaper, providing irreplaceable value to students that we cannot lose, especially in my section, a section highlighting students' voices and opinions as supported with fact. The right to most free speech is essential. My section not only shares the thoughts of writers with the overall student body to reflect on, but it also fosters creative thinking. Central, as an institution of education, must protect students' opportunities to learn how to think for themselves and express that effectively. Opposing LB 1071 actively harmed students' opportunity at that. Even out of my section where individual opinions can be expressed, the objective nature of the new section must also be protected. The very nature and standards of journalism thrive best when the right to freedom of press is had. Without fear of censorship, newspapers can publish the stories beneficial to their community without hesitation. Support LB 1071, which grants us the legal protections we need to succeed as student journalists, as students, and as emerging engaged citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. At this time, any board member may request that an item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and considered and voted on separately. Do we have any motions to remove items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's before us?
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tealyn. Do we have any abstentions this evening? All right. Seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Full?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackkey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Adai?
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving to information items, we have item J1A, the Accountability Committee update. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, President Head. I have two updates from the Accountability Committee tonight, just updates. First, the interim superintendent evaluation. Statute requires us to evaluate the interim superintendent twice this school year. Tonight, with an action item, the board votes to confirm that the first evaluation happened last week. The second week of January, board members received an email with evidence of progress toward each goal and a survey link. Survey results and board member comments became the first evaluation. Board of officers met with Mr. Ray last week to review it. The second update is about the superintendent search. The job posting closed on January 16, 2024. The Accountability Committee met last week. The search firm will thoroughly review and vet applications guided by the profile of an ideal candidate adopted by the board in October, the survey results from students, staff, family, and our community in May and September, and feedback from community forums last fall. The Board of Education will review semifinalist applications. The board plans to publicly announce our finalists for the position. We will publicly interview each of the finalists at a Board of Education meeting. Following the timeline, we adopted, the board plans to select a candidate in mid-February 2024. The latest information will always be sent directly to staff and families by email and posted on OPS.org, and this concludes the Accountability Committee update.
Thank you, colleagues. Do we have any questions on the Accountability Committee update? Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Mr. Head. Mr. Smith, I hear you correctly that the Accountability Committee is going to be reviewing applications and making some decisions based on some input to get us down to a certain list?
No, the firm will be doing that.
I see. Thank you. I guess, since I got the mic, let me also, one other clarification. There was some confusion with some communications that happened this week about the criteria that were going to be used, and I just want to acknowledge and thank that that got corrected. So I appreciate that we continue to look at the broad criteria that we looked at when we received the feedback from the community survey and other considerations of the board. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions, colleagues? All right. Seeing none, thank you. Move on to item, sorry, moving on to action items now. Item J2A, the approval of the interim superintendent, Mr. Ray's mid-year evaluation. Just a reminder, state statute requires an annual superintendent evaluation unless we have an interim superintendent, in which case we get to do two of them during the school year. So as Mr. Smith noted in his Accountability Committee update, the first of those two evaluations took place over the last few weeks, and this is just essentially clarifying that we have completed the first of the two evaluations and that Mr. Smith and myself met with Mr. Ray on Friday, the 19th, at roughly 3:30 PM to go over the findings with him. So do we have any questions, comments, colleagues? Mr. Tealyn? Yeah, sorry. I guess before we go to discussion, do we have a motion to approve? Thank you, Ms. Erdnberger. Nope. You're right. It's a committee motion, so it doesn't require a second, so we can jump right into discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Head. I think I've made this comment for a couple of years now, that, you know, just some frustration with the board evaluation tool and looking to improve it, and so I look forward to working on that improvement this year.
Thank you. And I'll actually let Mr. Smith, as the committee chair, address that one.
Yep. We are totally open to feedback. Anything that can aid us in providing a more thorough evaluation for the superintendent or interim superintendent, we want to do right now because we've done the first one. We have to keep it the same, but being able to make adjustments is something that we can discuss with our other departments.
And it's, just to follow up there, one of the things I talked with Mr. Smith about after our conversation is after the superintendent search is completed, the Accountability Committee will be able to focus a lot more time on the superintendent evaluation process, kind of go back to the drawing board and build out an evaluation metric that's kind of a hybrid between what we have now and also, you know, measuring some more short-term goals as well.
Yeah, I think that, you know, it's a, it is an important piece of what the board does, so, you know, a broad look at what the board is looking for, I think, is important in that process.
No, we look forward to working with you on that. So, Ms. Erdnberger, and then we'll be next.
Thank you, President Head. I just wanted to take this opportunity to, as we move forward and adjust our evaluation procedure, we have not been very consistent over the last three years. I know that the last, the first year that I remember when Dr. Holman introduced the new instrument, one of the things that was a big part of the evaluation was, once we had received all of the input from the board members, we reviewed that input and advised the board members of what basically the consensus was from all of the feedback before we commun-- and actually, I think Dr. Holman communicated it to Dr. Logan. I'm not even sure I, yeah. So before it was communicated to the superintendent, that piece did not happen this time. I'm, you know, it's water under the dam at this point, but I just want to make sure that we have it pegged as something that should be happening, and that is that the board should know what the composite evaluation is before it's communicated to the superintendent. I know we did get an email this afternoon while I was out of town saying that those materials are available for board review today before the board meeting. Obviously, I didn't manage that. Can I confirm that they will stay available until everybody that wants to see them can see them?
Yes, absolutely. And I'll fully take responsibility for the lack of communication here. So the way that this evaluation is being treated somewhat differently than the ones in the past is as it's a mid-year evaluation of the interim, we're treating it as more of a progress report versus a full evaluation, because the end-of-the-year evaluation will be on the same metrics as this one. And so that, I apologize, that was not communicated perfectly to the rest of the board as to how that was going to take place. The evaluation and all of the responses, it's always been board policy that that's a protected HR document, so it's not for public release, but that will, is available for board members to review. It will continue to be available, and we'll also offer small group meetings to go over that as well.
Thank you. It was small group meetings that we did the last time. And that's a perfectly valid explanation about why we didn't do it this time, but from the outside looking in, it wasn't clear that it was because of the interim nature of it or because we've changed our mind about sharing the information with board members. So I just wanted to clarify that. The other thing also for clarification purposes, if we could make sure that we have sufficient time between receipt of the evidence and having a chance to look through it and understand it before we, the deadline for turning in the evaluation, it was less than a week this time, which required a fair amount of rejuggling, at least on my part of my schedule. And so if we could just, on a going-forward basis, I recognize we've got several moving parts, one of which is when our research department, you know, they have to get their work done as thoroughly as they can, but if that could be the trigger point for when our deadline is as opposed to a pre-designated deadline regardless of when we get the information. I know that Mr. Smith corrected me last time to say that we had approved a timeline, which was accurate. The timeline said that we were getting the data in January, and I will assume responsibility for not having made that a little more clear because January could have been the day before the deadline. So if we all just work together to make sure that the board members have enough time to complete the evaluation, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. I know we had emailed about a few other things as well. I know one of the things you had mentioned was getting a paper copy of the evaluation so we could go back and forth between the questions without having to, you know, kind of click through a million and a half different screens, and that's something we'll--
That would be great because you can't go back and forth. So, yeah, that'd be super. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Ms. Full?
Thank you. I would like to echo some of the comments that have been made by Mr. Tealyn and Ms. Erdnberger. I would also suggest that we make the process a little bit more uniform and actually put it into our board policy about how our evaluations are to be done, because as Ms. Erdnberger said, the past three years, it's been inconsistent. And, you know, as a kind of new board member, I've been here for a year now, but it's really important for things like that to be uniform so I can compare and contrast some of, you know, the evaluations and the data, because it's different every single year. The data, it becomes, I don't want to say corrupted, I don't know what the word I'm looking for, it just becomes less useful, basically, especially when we're considering long-term implications of if we're hitting our metrics and our goals or not. So I would definitely, you know, recommend that we include it in our board policies exactly how we do this evaluation and make it more comprehensive, because there's no community involvement, there's no feedback from staff members, it's just simply, you know, the evidence that Dr. Crow presents in front of us and tells us, you know, this is the evaluation. And so I would, I did take a look at the evaluation, and I saw some consistent notes that, you know, there was a lack of evidence, and we would appreciate more research and evidence in the future to, you know, say that we can properly evaluate the superintendent. And, you know, a lot of the measurements that we use to say, you know, well, this is acceptable and this is exceptional, kind of the board process that we went through at the beginning was to, you know, get all of the board members together and say, what should the metrics be for what would be considered acceptable or exceptional for a goal? And I was actually very surprised because a lot of my recommendations were actually used for a lot of the measurements. And so I know exactly what the evidence was supposed to look like because I'm the one who recommended actually a majority of the goals that were used, and so that was just very interesting to me, and I would, you know, I'll continue to have conversations with Mr. Crow and with the Accountability Committee about how we can make this a better process, but as it stands right now, I think we could grow in a lot of different ways to make this more valuable information when we are evaluating our superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Full, and I'll echo my comments to Ms. Erdnberger as well. I think we definitely slipped up a little bit on communicating how this one was going to be different. The board, when we approved this mid-year evaluation, also approved doing the same evaluation for the end of year one, so the end of the school year one will follow, I guess we'll call it normal procedure. And then going forward into next school year, I guess ostensibly, we'll assume that the committee is going to change the evaluation process somehow, and so we'll see what that looks like, but we'll lay out a more formal process. Thank you. Any other comment, colleagues?
Yes.
Ms. Horace?
Thank you. So I was involved with Dr. Logan's evaluation, and I will say that I do appreciate, because I did see improvement, definitely compared to the evaluation process that we had with Dr. Logan, but I guess I just want clarification-- that we had with Dr. Logan, but I guess I just want clarification of what would be the goal of us gathering in these small groups to discuss the appraisal? I mean, are we doing that because you want to see what everybody else has said, and therefore you might want to try to change something? I guess I want clarification on what the goal is when we gather on a topic of this nature.
Yeah, so I think in the past and other colleagues on the board might have different, you know, responses to the value of the closed group than I do, or the small group, sorry. I think the value there is just being able to sit down and kind of digest what everyone's comments were, because, you know, we each look at, look at things from nine different lenses, and so being able to see, okay, you know, this is how I thought this metric was met, but maybe, maybe Mr. Smith or Ms. Krackey thought of it, you know, thought of it completely different angle, or looked at it completely differently, and so just being able to pull all that information together and digest it, to me, was valuable from those, so not necessarily pushing for changes per se, but just helping to digest the information a little better. Ms. Erdenberger, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I was just going to follow up and just say exactly what you said, that it's not an opportunity for horse trading, or changing people's minds, or switching up the evaluation, I mean, the whole point of the evaluation is that each of us, as Mr. Head said, sees the evidence and evaluates it against performance, so on and so forth, and, but it is useful to hear what our colleagues, how our colleagues interpreted the evidence or saw whether the goals were met, but that's really all it is, it's just an opportunity for us to all know what now the superintendent knows, which was, what's the composite evaluation, but it's not about horse trading, or getting people to change their minds, or adjusting the evaluation. Did that answer your question?
Yes, but I, even when we go through this discussion, though, I mean, let's just say, for example, that a particular board member absolutely didn't understand it and got it wrong, and, you know, it's not the proper reflection that they then want to provide, so then what we, what would we do? Just wait to the next opportunity to do the appraisal? I mean, does it give us the opportunity to fix something if we did understand something wrong?
So, in the past, we haven't really had that challenge come up, at least not to my knowledge, I, the comments and the responses to the evaluation, when they come in, they're anonymous, that being said, you know, if you, if after discussion or after more thought you'd like to change your responses, I'm sure we can absolutely facilitate that. Yeah, Mr. Teal?
Yeah, I think this, I think your question reflects a little bit of what Ms. Foll was referring to, which is that there is, there is a lack of clarity around what we are trying to accomplish with our evaluation and the policies and procedures around it, so I think this is all indicative of an opportunity to clean that up and be more straightforward and intentional about what we're trying to accomplish.
Absolutely, Dr. Holman.
Also, please know, as someone that evaluates the superintendent, each of you have the right to meet with the superintendent, to speak with the person about the evaluation. It doesn't always, obviously, it needs to come from the president and possibly the vice chair, but as individual employers of the superintendent, we each can and should, if you want to, have a conversation with the superintendent, so if you feel that you may have not completed the evaluation in the way that you thought that you should have, have a conversation with the superintendent, you do have that right to do so.
Thank you, good discussion, any other comments, colleagues? Ms. Krackey.
I thought that it was pretty frustrating, and so I backed off, and I didn't get it done, and I didn't get it done, and so I did it with Mr. Crow, and that was an amazing interaction between the two of us, and it was noted that there's like, this, the one part is about the superintendent, but this has gone on for years, some of those questions you may say no to because of what happened academically, but all of that is not necessarily the superintendent's fault, there's other parts to it that are intertangled, and I remember, we were both thinking that if we had one part of the evaluation doing this and another part doing that other part, there wouldn't be that confusion when some of those questions stick out like that, it's just a thought, and it was noted also that maybe we can find a better tool than the one we're using, because I think that one is just, right now, I think it's very frustrating, and I don't like to go through one like that when it's not completely out in the open for me, and I really know what I'm marking, that was just my opinion.
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate it. Any other comments, colleagues? All right, seeing none, we have a motion to approve on the floor, it is a committee motion, so it doesn't require a second, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Juarez.
Aye.
Krackey. Smith.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Foll.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Adye.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on, item J2B, approval of first reading of Policy 6213, Mr. Teal.
Thank you, Mr. Head, we talked about this, I think, at our very last meeting, when it was on as an information item, again, I'm happy to take any questions, otherwise the committee motions for approval of first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Teal, any questions, comments, colleagues? All right, seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Foll.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Krackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Erdenberger. Adye.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on, item J2C, approval of the report of the Legislative Committee, including recommended legislative positions, Ms. Erdenberger.
Thank you, President Head, and thank you very much for making me chairman of this committee.
Thank you for taking the job.
I'm not sure that I quite understood what might be involved, hours and hours of reviewing hundreds of legislative bills, and clearly, it wasn't just me, the committee, which is comprised of Ms. Cassidy, Dr. Holman, Mr. Head and I spent close to four hours last Thursday going over approximately 90 to 100 legislative bills that had been introduced so far, to determine the positions that OPS would be taking on each and every one of them, and then if that wasn't enough, Mr. Head and I spent another five hours yesterday reviewing just about the, well, all of the same bills, plus the ones that got introduced on Friday, with the Nebraska Association of School Boards, which is an opportunity to take a position from a slightly larger, with a slightly larger voice on behalf of all the school boards across Nebraska, and for what it's worth, our positions and the positions of the NASB were in almost complete alignment, there were a couple situations, which I'll be glad to share with you if you want to, maybe half a dozen, where we were a pro, oppose, or support, and NASB was monitor, or we were monitor, and they were oppose or support, but there were none where we were on the opposite ends of the positions, and so I found that very gratifying, because of course, the interests of the largest school district in the entire state, and the interests of the school district my husband sat with today that has 300 students in it, are not necessarily always going to align, so I just, I thought that it was productive both at the OPS level, but then at the NASB level as well. For those of you that have your agendas online, underneath the rationale is a list of all approximately 90 bills that we covered the other night, and who introduced, just a brief title, not a complete description of that bill, and then the position that we have chosen to take, and that the, well, not chosen to take, that the Legislative Committee recommends that the board take, the options were to support and support with a letter, to oppose, to oppose with a letter, in each case, we may also, in some cases, have testimony, where someone who represents the board, or perhaps one of our admin staff that is particularly well-versed on a topic, may go down and provide testimony as necessary, the other ones we do is monitor, which is basically keep an eye on it. As our very eloquent guests said tonight, the decision of the committee Thursday night was to oppose LB 1071, which is the journalism bill. This is a position that we have taken, well, I've only been on the board three years so far, but every year that I've been on the board, I know that it's a position that is consistent with what the board has done in the past, and I will let you know that it's also the position that the NASB took, was to oppose it, so notwithstanding your eloquence, on the other hand, it did have some merit, and you guys were very, very persuasive. I'm going to share with you a little bit about the reasoning behind our opposition in the past, and then I am going to recommend, I think on behalf of the committee if I can, that we change our opposition to monitor until we have a chance to talk about it further, so yay for that, but I'm not making any promises. The reason that we have opposed this bill in the past, also for the benefit of the board members, is that because the language in the bill identifies school-sponsored media as a public forum, and that's the language that's in this bill, it's the language that's been in every bill that we have elected to oppose, the concept of a public forum becomes quite messy and uncontrollable, not with respect to our students necessarily, but once it becomes a public forum, then it is a forum for the public, and it is possible for people who are not associated with our school district, are not students, to be able to take advantage of our media, and to include some of their materials, which may or may not be acceptable, but we don't want to take that risk, and it's not their paper, it's our paper, there's no way, I'm reading frankly from a letter that Dr. Holman submitted two years ago on this subject, there'd be no way for student journalists or media advisors to prohibit the speech or communications that come in from random members of the public, and in an effort to control that input, it's not enforceable. The point that we're coming from is that it be a school-sponsored media, and that's our primary problem with it, it's not the prior restraint that you all were talking about, although presumably there are some instances we could all agree on, where, you know, the freedom of speech is not absolute, as we all know, but I do think that I would like to recommend that we change the recommendation on behalf of the committee, so that that one goes from opposed with letter to monitor, which only means we're going to talk about it further, it may come back the same way, but for now, other than that, as you can see from this list, there are almost 100 bills, and we've taken a position on all of them, and I would like to have the board approve those positions with the modification that I gave.
Thank you, Ms. Erdenberger, and again, thank you for taking over as the chair of the committee, and just real quick before we open it up for comments, I fully agree with your amendment there to change the bill to monitor, and again, thank you, students, for being here, you know, I would still personally lean towards opposing the bill, but I look forward to, you know, continuing the conversation both in the committee and hopefully speaking with, you know, some of our student journalists as well, to better understand the dynamics there, so any other questions, colleagues? Start on the right, Ms. Krackey.
Mr. Head, just as a point of order, I think what we need is, we've got a motion from the committee, I think we've got a separate motion from Ms. Erdenberger that we need a second as an amendment to that motion.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so we have the, real quick, yep, real quick, Ms. Krackey, so we have a committee motion to approve the report, we have a amendment, a motion made by Ms. Erdenberger to amend the report to change LB, is it 1071, from opposed to monitor, do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Teal, and beat you to it, so now we are having discussion on the amendment, but we'll open it up in general, Ms. Krackey, back to you, I apologize for the delay.
I think that we usually have our attorney weigh in on these bills, as she has done before and presented them to us, and I'd like to have her weigh in on this as we go forward.
Absolutely, Ms. Neelys Brush, do you have anything you'd like to add on the report?
Do you have specific concerns that you would like me to weigh in on, or?
We hadn't done that before, because you must have helped us with our first decision.
So, a public forum, if we're going to talk specifically about the legislation, is a very, very different thing than what we currently have as part of a school district, right, and I think Jane eloquently said what we have previously done, but it essentially requires that school newspapers include articles by any member of the public, regardless of whether or not they're affiliated with the school district, so anyone could submit it if this was included in the legislation, the legislation still has the same provision that it previously did when Senator Moorefield introduced it originally, and so it would open up, a public forum has legal significance, right, and so it means that anyone could submit to that paper, which I don't think it was anyone's intent, whether that be the students, or that be the Board of Education's intent to allow that, and so with that language, it becomes particularly difficult to limit who submits to that public forum, and so that is the genesis of the opposition that the board previously had taken on the legislation, and it is why the committee took the position that they took Thursday night, and will continue to have discussion about the position with regard to whether or not it should remain opposed with a letter, oppose or monitor with research.
Thank you, anything else you wanted to ask, Ms. Krackey? All right, Ms. Juarez?
Thank you, and thank you for that clarification, I am glad that we are going to switch that to monitor, you know, I mean, because I definitely am going to take the time to send in a letter that I had before to the state legislature, I am very grateful to the speakers who came this evening and provided their feedback, I thought the students did an outstanding job, and I am very supportive of going with that change, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juarez, looking left, any comments? Ms. Foll?
Thank you, these are actually questions for Megan, or really anybody who can answer them for me, my first question, is the Omaha World-Herald considered a public forum?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
But I can find out for you. But I can find out for you.
Okay. And just because someone submits into the paper, does that mean that the paper has to publish what they submit?
So you can have a time, place, and manner restriction if something's considered a public forum, but it would be anyone, you know, and you can think of, you know, positively and negatively, as one would say, that anyone could submit it. And so it would be within, you know, they could have, let's say, a paragraph, that's the manner in which, or the length in which that they could submit for that paper, but that would be the parameters by which you could submit something for that.
But my question is...
And you would have to take anybody's in order to do that. Just like you have everybody come to a board meeting and have public comment, you've got time, place, and manner restrictions on that public comment. It's for five minutes, they have to identify their name, they have to spell it for the record. Those are the types of things that you would provide for, same thing for a paper.
So you provide all those things when you submit it, but again, does that mean that the paper has to publish what was submitted?
And I just found out that the World-Herald is not a public forum, just so, for your information, so. And I'm sorry, ask the question again.
Just because someone submits something into a public forum, does that mean that the newspaper or the public forum is obligated and has to publish whatever was submitted?
Under the time, place, and manner restrictions, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Can I make some comments? Okay. I really appreciate the students who came to testify today and the student advisors. When I saw that this was, you know, we were going to oppose as a district this bill with a letter, I was very concerned because of very recent happenings in the state, and several of our students talked about it in Grand Island, where students' freedom of speech were taken away in their student newspaper because they were publishing things about LGBTQ rights. And that, in my eyes, is morally wrong. We should not be giving administrators or principals or anyone else the authority to police students' speech when it comes to advocating for their rights as individuals. I think any effort to do that on behalf of an administration or a district is despicable, and we should be doing everything in our power to protect student rights, student freedoms, and freedom of speech. There are so many reasons why legislation like this is essential for our state. And I will note, it's not that I've heard a whole bunch of things that have come out of our district that, you know, students are being denied the right of freedom to speech in their newspaper or any of their journalistic kind of products. I just fear that we are taking this stance that really has no effect on our district but has all of the negative implications for other students in other districts. And so I would really push for the district not only to take a monitor position, but to take a position of support. Our sister states have laws that protect student journalists and student advisors. And we need to be way more competitive when it comes to these types of things, because this is what people are going to consider, things like this, when they decide whether or not to move to the state, raise their kids in our state, educate our kids in public schools. And so we really need to take a second look at this legislation and this bill, and like I said, I would encourage us to support it because of the educational value that it could potentially have for our students, for the civic engagement implications, preparing them for their future, for college career in life, isn't that one of our visions? Giving them the expression of diverse perspectives, increasing accountability and transparency, not only in our schools but in our communities as a whole, providing us as a district legal protections, and promoting the First Amendment rights of every student. Because I was doing my research, in one of those court proceedings, they said, "Students do not leave their freedom of speech at the schoolhouse gate." And I think we need to keep that at the forefront of our minds when we are making the decision about whether to support or oppose this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, colleagues? All right, seeing none, we'll call the roll first on Ms. Erdenberger's amendment to change the recommended position on LB 1071. So Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Erdenberger. Full.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Eightye.
Thank you. The Erdenberger amendment is successful. We'll now have a, we have a pending motion is to approve the report as amended. Do we have any further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to divide the motion so that the question of LB 840 may be considered individually from the rest of the recommended legislative positions.
Okay, we have a motion to divide LB 840 out of the report. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Juarez. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we can proceed to vote. Ms. Full?
Thank you. So LB 840 is separate from the bill that we have been talking about. LB 840 was introduced by Senator McKinney, and it is called the Poverty Elimination Action Plan Act. We, as a district, decided to monitor. We didn't oppose or support this bill, but I would also appreciate if we could send this back to the Committee for further consideration and ultimately ask for their support of this More specifically, I'll go into detail. Basically, what this bill does is says that, you know, cities over a certain size, over 20,000 people, need to develop an action plan for eliminating poverty in their cities. And this is not a unique piece of legislation. There's been other bills that have been introduced that require cities to do action plans for affordable housing. And those plans are, at least the one that I've seen from Omaha, has been very comprehensive. It's been a great tool for deciding how we are going to address the affordable housing crisis in Omaha. And so the same consideration is being taken for this bill, and I think supporting this is really important because our school district serves the most impoverished students of any school district in the state. And poverty is cited probably as the number one reason why students struggle in school, whether, you know, that means they have a lack of access to resources. So children in poverty often lack basic resources like textbooks, school supplies, and a conducive learning environment. A poverty elimination plan can ensure that all children have equal access to these resources, leveling the playing field for education. It also has implications for nutrition and health, because we spend a lot of money as a school district feeding children. And if we can work as a community, not just our school district, to address nutritional and health issues as a whole, that's going to be a lot of, I don't want to think of this in terms of money, but it's going to be a lot of money saved to the district, and it's going to mean a lot of students are going to be in a lot better position when it comes to showing up to class, being prepared to learn, having, you know, a mind that is free and clear of any other worries. Because we know when a kid is hungry, they're not going to be paying attention in class. It's going to be their last, you know, the last thought in their mind. So, I mean, I just, I've listed so many things on here about why it's important to reduce childhood poverty especially. And in the bill, it does cite specifically that the cities will need to look at public education and education as a whole when taking into consideration the Poverty Action Plan. And so that's the reason why I wanted to bring this to the Board's attention, and I would appreciate a vote to send this back to the Committee so they can further reconsider if they'd like to support this bill or not.
Thank you. And just for clarification, so the motion is to divide the question to consider LB 840 separately. The motion was made and seconded. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Teal?
I'd just like to clarify. So the Legislative Committee's suggestion was monitor. And you're not suggesting that we change that position, or you're suggesting we take no position until the Committee's reconsidered?
Well, I would like, well, I guess I'll put the...
Okay. So the, just to be, is that clear then that the motion is to, is to take no position on that bill tonight pending additional conversation by the Committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Erdenberger.
I think, I feel, I feel like monitor with research, I think maybe that's where, what you were asking about, Mr. Teal, monitor with research is that holding tank for bills that we are still looking at and have not yet decided to oppose or support. So I think that monitor with research is taking no position, at least that's how I look at it. So with your opinion in mind, as we continue to monitor and research, we will presumably eventually go with an oppose or support. But I guess, I'm not sure that, I would like to vote against your suggestion, if only because we have 100 bills, and I'm concerned about if we get into the habit of pulling out one at a time, when the change isn't, doesn't actually change what we're already doing. So I will be voting against your motion, but I recognize what you're interested in and that, as far as I'm concerned, is part of our monitor with research. Does that make sense to you?
Thank you. Ms. Full?
Just for clarification's sake, monitoring with research doesn't technically mean that we ever have to take a stance against it, though, does it, or a stance either way? Yeah. So, I mean, that's my, that's my point. I just, and I'm very open to more conversations with you about this bill, but I worry that it's going to be put to the wayside and that no action is actually going to come of it because the Legislative Committee is so busy and is considering lots of bills and is actively lobbying on behalf of those bills for efficiency's sake and for time's sake. I think it would make sense to amend my motion to, sorry, one second. I'd like to amend my motion to divide the motion so that the question of LB 840 may be considered individually with a support recommendation. If that makes sense. So I would move to support this bill.
All right, we have a motion to amend the motion from monitor with research to support. Do we have a second on that amendment?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Juarez. To make things easier, can we replace the initial amendment with the new amendment? Do we have any objection to doing that? That way, we only have one on the table? All right, seeing, so, it'll save us a little bit of time, hopefully, if we can do that procedurally. Megan's nodding her head, so we'll go with it. All right, so the motion on the table is then to change the position on LB 840 from monitor with research to support. Am I understanding that correctly, Ms. Full? All right. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Erdenberger?
I just think it's premature to take a support position. I personally, for example, this bill isn't even on the NASB radar screen, so, which maybe it should be, I recognize that, but all I'm saying is that I know I haven't looked into it enough to know where it and OPS's interests intersect, and so I'm, it would be premature to support it, in my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comment, Ms. Full?
I understand where you're coming from. I understand there are so many bills that we have to look at and research. It's ridiculous, and it's very exhausting, but, not that I'm saying to trust me, but trust me on this one. It's a good bill, and it does intersect with our school district because the city probably would be working with us to fulfill their obligations to monitor and study and develop a plan for education in our city. And that's really all I have to say about it. It is a very good bill, it's something that we need, and something that affects our students every single day is poverty, and creating a plan to work towards that, I think, is very worthy of our attention and should be supported. Thank you.
Ms. Erdenberger?
Well, with, I would, I would like, I would like to ask you to withdraw your amendment and trust me, that I will not let monitor and research just fall by the wayside. I promise we will be looking into it and holding people that know what they're doing accountable for. I, and I know you won't let me forget it anyway, but trust me, we will not just let it drift away.
You'd like to rescind the motion? Okay. Do we have any objection to, I think, Ms. Juarez, you seconded it, so you'll have to be okay with withdrawing the motion. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
All right. Seeing no objection, we no longer have a amendment on the table, so we'll go back to the original motion to approve the Committee report as amended. Any further discussion? Ms. Full?
I'd just like to say thank you for indulging me on this one, and I really love having conversations with the rest of the Board members about these bills and what's important to the district, so, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussions...
I just, a clarification, we are also assuming that the division of the question is no longer in effect?
Correct, yes. All right. Seeing no further discussion, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll on approving the Committee recommendations as amended.
Teal.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Full.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Eightye.
The motion carries, and the Committee recommendations are adopted with the Erdenberger amendment. Moving on to Item K, receipt of reports, we have three reports this evening. Item K1, the 2022 graduate follow-up. Item K2, the 2022-2023 Advanced Placement Annual Report. And Item K3, the first quarter Board Conference expenses for 2023-2024. With that, we have no closed session this evening, so let the record reflect that the Board meeting adjourned at 7:42 PM. Thank you all.